D and F block elements, transition elements, they have partially filled d orbital in elemental state or in its common oxidation state. Manganese. Manganese 4 s square 3 d 5, transition element and d block elements. Zinc 30. Argon. 4 s 2, transition elements, they have partially filled d orbital in elemental state or in its common oxidation state. Zinc, transition elements and d block elements. Zinc, cadmium, mercury are not considered as transition elements as they have fully filled d orbitals. D block elements which have. Partially filled d orbitals. All the d block elements are transition elements or all transition elements are d block elements true. Copper 2 positive has partially filled d orbital considered as transition elements. 4 transition series are present. Scandium 2 zinc, total 10 elements. Utrium to cadmium. Both transition series are present. Atomic radii first decreases from scandium to manganese then iron to nickel almost same then copper to zinc size increases. And moving from top to bottom. Size remains same due to lanthanoid contraction between 4d and 5d. 4d, 5d. Sconium, half neon, N B T A almost same size. Scandium, lithium, lanthanum, top to bottom size increase due to increase in number of shells. Electronic configuration. General electronic configuration N minus 1 d 1 to 10, N S 1 to 2. Outermost elements generally have N S 2 configuration. 4 s 2, 3 d 5, iron, cadmium, mercury. Haskell, chrome and graphene are now moving together. Chrome and graphene. Are now. Moving together. Elements having configuration N S 1. 29 copper. Palladium is N S 0 configuration. Density. 4 d. 3d series is from. 21 scandium. 2. 30 zinc. 4d series. Is from 39 uranium. 2. 48 cadmium. 5d series is from. 57 lanthanum. And 72 half neon. 2. 80 mercury. And 60 series is. From 89. Extrium. And. 104. Thorium. 2. 112. Cn. Total 10 elements in each series. Atomic radii. This is d block right. 3d. Scandium. To manganese. Iron. Cobalt, nickel. And copper, zinc. Scandium. Size decreases. Almost same. And then increases. Top to bottom. Top to bottom. 3d. 3d, 4d and 5d are almost same. Lanternoid contraction. Lanternoid. Contraction. 4d car zirconium. Is almost equal to the half neon. And N B is almost equal to. Ta. Almost same size. Scandium, uranium. Scandium. Uranium, lanthanum. Size increases. Shell increases. Shell number increases obviously. Electronic configuration. I know about electronic configuration of d block elements. Density. In 3d series. Scandium. Size decreases in mass. From along from scandium to. Copper, size decreases. Mass increases. Density increases. Copper, zinc, density decreases. In 4d series. Density increases up to 8 group then decreases. And 5d series density increase up to 9th group and then decreases. Maximum densities of iridium. Minimum densities scandium. 3d, 4d, 5d. And moving from top to bottom. Density increases. And moving from 4d to 5d, increase in density is much higher. Scandium to copper. Density decreases. 3d. Scandium to copper. Density decreases. Density increases. Copper to zinc. Density increases. 4d. Group 3 to 8. To 8th group. Density increases and 8 to. 12th group. Density. Decreases. In 5d series. Density increases up to 9th group. And then density decreases. Maximum density iridium. Maximum density here iridium. The minimum density here. Scandium here. 3d, 4d, 5d. And moving from top to bottom. Density increases. And moving from 4d to 5d, increase in density is much higher. As size remains same and mass increases, density increases much higher. Metallic bond is directly proportioned to number of unpaid electrons metallic bond strength. Is directly proportional to. Number of. Unpaired electrons. And moving from left to right, first number of unpaid electron increase. Therefore, strength of metallic bond increase. And then decrease as bearing of electronic face. And moving from left to right. First number of unpaid electron increase. Metallic bond increase and then decreases bearing of electronic face. And moving from top to bottom. Left to right. First increase. Then decrease. Top to bottom. 3d. 4d, 5d. Metallic bond strength increase. Metallic bond strength increase. Melting point is directly proportional to. Metallic bond strength. N B S. Metallic bond. Strength. Number of. Unpaired electrons. W maximum melting point. Melting point increase on. Top to bottom. 3d, 4d, 5d. Melting point increases as metallic bond character increases. Except for d 10. D 10 configuration. Copper. Gold. Silver. Zinc. Cadmium. Mercury. tungsten. Maximum melting point. Mercury. Minimum. Melting point. Enthalpy of atomization. Enthalpy of atomization. Delta H A. Atomization. So let us say. 3d series. 3d series name. Maximum delta H A. Vanadium. Minimum. Delta H A. Zinc. 3d, 4d, 5d. Down the group. Delta H A increases. So we have seen metallic bond character increases. Metallic bond character increases. Number of unpaid electrons increases. Melting point increases. Density increases down the group. Size increases down the group. Then we have oxidation state. Both N S and N minus 1 d unpaid electron take part in bond formation due to less energy gap. Does not show variable oxidation state. Scandium plus 3. 2 3 4, 2 3 4, 3. 2 3, 2 3 4 5. 1 2 3 4 5 6. 2 3 4 5 6 7. 2 3 4 6. 2 3 4 2 3 4 2 2. 1 2. This is not show variable oxidation state. Does not show variable oxidation state. Plus does not show plus 5 oxidation state cobalt. Vanadium is 4 s 2 3 d 3. Stability of oxidation state in gaseous form. Stability of oxidation state in gaseous form. In gaseous form. Stability. D 0 is so much. Then d 10. And then d 5. Stability increase. Scandium 3 positive more stable than 2 positive. Oxidation state is generally divided into 3 categories. It is generally divided into. 3 categories, higher oxidation state, 3d series. Plus 4 to plus 7. Higher oxidation, oxidation state is generally divided into 3 categories. Higher oxidation state like 3d series plus 4 to plus 7. Shown when it is attached to oxygen or fluorine. Higher oxidation state. Plus 4. To plus 7. Plus 4, 5, 6, 7. Higher oxidation state. 3d series. Attachment with oxygen or fluorine. Attachment with. Oxygen or fluorine. Like Mn O 4 negative. Mn O 4 negative. Mn O 4 2 negative. Mn O 2. C R O 2, C L 2. C R. O 4 2 negative. Mn F 4. Plus 7, plus 6. Plus 6, plus 4. Maximum oxidation state of d block elements. Maximum oxidation state. R 2 O 4. Plus 8. O S O 4. Plus 8. Common oxidation state here. Common oxidation state. Plus 2 and plus 3. Shown by d block in their attachment with. Attachment. With. Chloride. And S 2 negative sulfide. As both are very good reducing agent. Very good. Reducing agent. Examples. N I S. Plus 2. Fe C L 2. Plus 2. Fe C L 3. Plus 3. Lower oxidation state. Minus 1, 0 and plus 1. By. Shown by. Metal carbonides. N I C O 4. Mn. C O 5. Minus 1. C O. 4. Negative. Interstitial compound non-stochometric. Compounds. They have similar chemical properties but different physical properties, hardness, density, melting point increases but conductivity remains. As it fills vacant spaces therefore it decreases conductivity and mobility. Have high melting point. And chemically inert. Catalyst d block elements and its components act as catalyst because they have weakened d orbitals therefore they form. Transition state with low activation energy, they show variable oxidation state, they have surface area. Example I negative 2 S 2 O 8 2 negative. In presence of Fe C L 2 turns to 2 S 4 2 negative plus I 2. Common catalyst used in various chemical reactions are. Catalyst. B 2 O 5. Contact process. Oxidation of. S O 2. To S O 3. Fe. Inhiber process. Wilkinson's. Catalyst. Used in hydrogenation of olefin. So. D S P 2 square planar. Pentos reagent. Fe S 4. Plus H 2 O 2. Atoms catalyst. Platinum. Seclor. Nata. Catalyst. What is it? Ti C L 4. Plus. C 2 H 5 3. Aluminium. Platinum hospital process. Then we have. Hydrogenation of alkene. Hydrogenation. Of. Alkene. Magnetic character, 2 types of magnetic moment. Spin only magnetic moment. And orbital only magnetic moment considered generally in F block elements. For d block elements we consider only. Spin only magnetic moment. For d 1 to d 5. Mu spin only is almost equal to mu experimental. For d 6 to d 9. Mu expected is less than mu experimental. Magnetic character. Spin only. Magnetic moment. Mu. Orbital only. D 1 to d 5. Mu expected is almost equal to mu. Experimental. For d 6 to d 9. Mu expected. Is less than mu. Experimental. Ionization and halpy. Ionization and halpy, chromo copper, thiod to half iron and soli gold, molecular configuration checkled due to stability. Third ionization and halpy of manganese is high. Ionization and halpy. The first point. Copper and chromium. I E is high. Manganese. Third is high. Case of iron and platinum. Some of first to ionization and halpy. Nickel to positive. Some of first to ionization and halpy of nickel is less than some of first to ionization and halpy of platinum. N I 2 positive. Platinum 2 positive. Stability. Some of. First to ionization and halpy of nickel is less than some of first to ionization and halpy of platinum. Some of. First to ionization and halpy of nickel. Is less than. Some of. First to ionization and halpy of platinum. first to ionization and halpy of platinum. Ionization and halpy. Zada riski hogi, just stable hoga. Iski ionization and halpy zara hai, tere khamus stebana tha. Ionization and halpy iski zara hogi to stebi hogaa. Cuteo, panaai. So, first to ionization and halpies of nickel is less. So, stability of nickel is more than stability of effect of, effect of lantenoid contraction. In five D series of ionization and halpies, far higher than four D series due to lantenoid contraction. Four, five, six, ten. Oh, no. Standard redox potential. Sublimation energy plus ionization energy plus hydration energy. Spontaneous. On moving from T I to copper, S O P decreases, S R P increases. To copper. S O P decreases. S R P increases. Except manganese and zinc. Except manganese. And zinc. M. But slow due to formation of oxide layer on surface except copper. Metal plus H C L gives M C L two. Delta G node is equal to negative reaction spontaneous but slow due to formation of oxide layer on surface. Although E node is high but they are a weak reducing agent compared to S block. Weak reducing agents. Compared to S block. E node, D seven, D ten, high. Left to right. E node, M two positive. M three positive. Decrease. Except chromium and iron. F E two positive, backwards. C F S A is more. Therefore more stable. C R two positive. C R three positive. C R two positive. D four. D two G. E G one. Non-stable. D four. C R three positive. F E three positive. M N three positive. Stability. Alloy formation, mixture of metal, brass, bronze, electron, D block element form alloy as the size do not differ much. Hardness, no corrosion, complex complex formation tendency due to small size, high charge, weakened orbital and variable variance. Color compounds, by compounds are colored. There must be transition, charge transfer spectra, D D transition, polarization, homolyte transition. This transition of electron will lie invisible region. D D transition generally same number of unpaid electron, same color. D D transition. Number of unpaid electron, same same color. D N, ten minus N. D one, D nine. Blue. Except T I three positive. Pink. D two, D eight. Cream. D one to D nine. D D transition colored compound, D zero. D zero. D ten. No, D D transition. Colorless. Z N C L two. D ten, white. C R two positive. C U two positive. Blue. M N two positive. C U two positive. Pink. Light pink. D five. Weak field ligand. F E two positive and N I two positive. Creamy. Chromium copper, they have one conduct technique blue. F E three positive. Pale yellow, D five. Polarization created the polarization, more than density of color. Intensity of color increases. E G C L. E G B R. E G I. White. Pale yellow. Dark yellow. Polarization increase. Color increase. Color change due to transfer spectra three types. Transfer. Spectra. Ligand to metal charge transfer. L should be negatively, the metal should be in high oxidation state. High oxidation state. More than equal to three. Ligand should be negatively charged. O, two negative. K M N O four. K two C R two O seven. C R O four. Two negative. C R O two, C L two. V O four, three negative. Pink, orange, yellow, blue. Pink. Orange. Yellow. Blue, D D transition cannot occur, K M N O four. D D transition not occur. Momentarily charge transfer. Second is M L C D, metal to ligand charge transfer. Second hai, M L C D. Metal to ligand charge transfer, ligand is pi acid ligand. Pi acid ligand. Except negatively charged. Jaise ki sigma donor pi acceptor. Pi donor. Pi acceptor. F E C O five. Pi acid. Transition of electron from metal to colored, therefore colored. K. P T, C L three. N square, C two H four. Z Z. Salt. This is pi donor. Pi acceptor. Kisko dekha? N square, C two H four, yani ki metal to ligand. Third is metal to metal charge transfer. Spectator iron. D N F block. Central metal atom. D N F block. C U two. F E. C N six. D block. D block. Chocolate. Brown. F E four. F E. C N six. Blue. D block. C U three. F E. C N six. Green. D block. Oxides of D block elements, three D elements. Three D elements have higher affinity for oxygen but less. Three D elements have higher affinity for oxygen but less than S block elements. They form several oxides at high temperature. These oxide are acidic basic or amphotatic depending on oxidation state of transition metal. From scandium to manganese they will show all oxides possible except chromium in plus five oxidation state. Manganese in. Plus five. Oxides. Show all. Oxides. Except. Chromium in. Plus five oxidation state. And manganese in plus five plus six oxidation state. From iron to zinc oxide possible only in common oxidation state. From iron to zinc. Iron to zinc. Oxides in. Common oxidation state. So from all the oxides their nature can be acidic, amphotatic or basic. Nature of oxide. Acidic, A, M, C. Acidic. M N two. O seven. C R O three. Then we have amphotatic. Amphotatic oxide. C R O two. Calcutta is. B two O five, very. Beautiful. And it is in. T M C zone. D I O two. M N O two. C R two O three. He said no. Rest, basic. Acidic character increase. Oxidation state increase, acidic character increase. Helides of D block elements. Free activity with halogens. Halogens. With halogens. F two. C L two. B R two. I two. Helides in higher oxidation state underco. Hydrolyzes very easily, higher oxidation state. Helides of. High oxidation state. Hydrolyze easily. D I O two. D I O two. That's four D C N. Metal halogens do not exist. Metal halogens. Do not exist. They are. V I four. F E I four. C U I two. Iron is very good. M N I four. C U B R two. M N. B R four. M N I four. D I F four. And C U F. Very good oxidizing agent. F two, C L two, B R two. I two, S R P increases. M N F five. M N F six. M N F seven. Do not exist. Due to static routing. Many copper compound are unstable in acid solution. Common iron. Lab preparation for dichromide. Lab preparation for potassium dichromide.